From June 3 to June 11. And we're going to add, I think we're going to add another crew organization that won a national championship, not particularly, not really tied to a school, but they are a town team. And so we're going to let them go in March because they are champions. And we still have some more time, the school year 2022 to 2023. You know, maybe we can get a baseball team in there, softball team, but we're up to four now, so that's really good. It'll be a fun time. And Joe Kelly and Ralph May are helping organize that. Also, earlier that day swearing in a new officer at, I think, 1:30? Yeah, I think so. On the 12th, I will be again over to my kindergarten teacher's house. Actually, she's now up on King Street. She is celebrating her 105th birthday. And Ruth Wilson, if you're from Cos Cob, you know her. And she's on Facebook every day, and she sends us emails a few times a week. So she's pretty active still, so God bless her. And Rare Disease Day is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. So we've been doing that as a tradition here in Greenwich now for the fourth year. And we'll have local representatives of a couple organizations there. So hopefully, we'll see you all there. That's it. Lauren, good morning.
Good morning, Fred. Good morning, everyone. And I'll apologize in advance to my colleagues. I will not be there on the 13th as you shake all those 88 hands. So thank you for doing it amongst the two of you. I'll try to be brief. Last night, as part of the Central Middle School Building Committee, we had a community forum at Central Middle School. It was at 7:30. It was well attended, mostly on Zoom. We got a lot of questions. And we just started to show the community, especially the neighbors, some of the sighting of the new building, some of the new access points, you know, clearly with a goal to improve the queuing of parents who drop their kids off, the bus queuing, the students that walk to school, a lot do walk to Central, as well as, you know, the opportunity for students to ride their bikes to school. There is a ton of misinformation going out and about as it relates to Central Middle School. A building has not been designed yet. There's been all kinds of statements about the square footage, the price of square footage. And the big issue is when the ed specs were designed, it was designed at a utilization of about 76%. And the architects typically are designing a building utilization somewhere around 65%. And a family member actually even reached out to me and said, can't believe you're building a school without bathrooms and stairs. And I said, I don't know how the press got that wrong. And I'm just going to say, check your sources. Is it the media trying to get a headline? Is it somebody trying to stir the pot? Is it politically motivated? You know, feel free to ask any member of the building committee for some of the facts. The building, what makes that extra square footage that has to be built are things like stairways, elevators, bathrooms, et cetera. So there's the sort of the program space, like classrooms, the auditorium, the gym, et cetera. But you don't build a building without walls. So that's where you get the total square footage. So I just wanted to clear that up. And I wanted to thank the BET for all their hard work. The Budget Committee did propose a budget yesterday that'll go to the full BET along with the mill rate increase, et cetera. So I just wanted to thank them for their hard work.
Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. And I know we have a full agenda, so I will have just two short updates. The first is I'm looking forward to the Lions Club Annual Pancake Breakfast this Saturday at the high school from 8 o'clock to noon. And the Greenwich Sustainability Committee is accepting nominations for its sustainability award until Friday, March 17. Nominations can be sent to sustainability@grenwichct.org. And for more information about the Greenwich Sustainability Committee, please go to the town website under First Selectments Committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, going right to old business. We have Chief McHugh here with a Greenwich Fire Department fee ordinance review. Yes, please. Is Chris here? There he is. Morning, Chris.
Good morning, everybody. We just met recently, Chris and I, and I met with the RTM committees. Oh, I was on, I'm sorry.
I can hear you.
Sorry about that. So good morning, everybody. Yeah, we met with the Rules Committee on the RTM and the Town Services Committee. And both of them approved this fees for the construction plan review, 11 to 1 for the rules and 12 to 0 for the Town Services Committee. There were some questions from the Finance Committee that we've been talking to Brooks with through emails and stuff like that. But we're looking forward to moving this whole thing forward for the betterment of the town of Greenwich and its residents.
Thank you, Chief. Chris, do you want to add anything?
No.
Okay, well, this is, I know the BET's.
Yeah, I speak with Alma, there's probably going to be a first read for the RTM, and hopefully this is going to be approved by the RTM in the April meeting.
Okay. So this particular thing, part of it, we hadn't heard before. We'd heard the actual fee last time.
Yeah, correct.
Time sensitivity on this, so.
Hopefully, maybe, hopefully start July 1st is what we like to do.
Okay, so as far as a vote here today.
There's ordinance language, so are we making a change to the ordinance? Because that's what we have in our packet.
Yeah, maybe. I'm going to, thank you. Good morning.
What you have before you is the same package that went to the RTM. So when the fire chief and the fire marshal had appeared before you in the past, there was no ordinance for you to look at. As you know, the RTM is the final authority on approving ordinances, but historically, we've come to you at least to take a look at the proposal in draft form before it goes to the RTM or along parallel paths. So that's what we're doing here. So the RTM, it looks like they will approve the ordinance, that there were no changes made to what's before you.
Okay, so, yeah, so we could do a vote on this today.
If you'd like to, yes, absolutely.
I mean, it's what we, and we've discussed this for, yes, we've discussed this for several months.
The concept is the same, absolutely. So if you recall, both the fire marshal and the fire chief had given you the details of the proposal, so the details have not changed. We've just put them in the form of an ordinances and tried to do a very simple, short ordinance without going into too much detail. But what was presented to you in the past is here in this document.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Nice, short one, too. Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Alma. So do we have a motion to accept?
Lauren Rabin, I motion that we approve the ordinance language that is going to be submitted to the RTM.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo, is a yes?
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Going on to Item B, which is Parking Services Director and GPD Deputy Chief, Craig Gray. Good morning, Chief. How are you?
Good morning. How are you, First Selectman?
I'm hanging in.
And it's Deputy Chief Craig Gray for the record.
Thank you. So you're back here again to discuss the meter rates proposal, changes for downtown Greenwich. And we've had two weeks to get some feedback and also discuss, you know, with other people and form our own thoughts. So if you had anything you wanted to add to?
Just briefly, I know you've had time to think it over, and we also have received some feedback. Obviously, it was in the paper. I would like to just share, you know, a couple of things that, since that was first presented, we've had an increase in the interest in the central Greenwich permits, right? So again, the word kind of got out about the value of that central Greenwich permit to those that hold it. And so I just want to put that out. It didn't quite get through, I think, into the paper, that the central Greenwich permit holder receives a good financial benefit at $720 a year. That permittee would recoup the fee in 18 weeks, right? This is the work on the avenue for a year. The cost of this permit, as it currently stands, is unaffected by the proposed rate change, basically saying that it's of even greater value, right? Furthermore, for the habitual meter feeder on the avenue, it's for them that uses, for them to use the long-term lots, if they continually use the two-hour meeting and feed it, if they shift to the rear lots in nine weeks, they're going to have financial value, right, on their part. But I did just, again, want to just emphasize, the whole purpose of this is movement. It's not a magic wand. It's not going to create more spaces, but it's going to create flow. And any number of spaces that we can free up on the avenue at the height of the day, right, will be beneficial to the shopper's experience. And that's basically what I want to say.
No, thank you. No, what you say makes a lot of sense, and my only concerns were, you know, what they were two weeks ago, which is, you know, we're trying not to, we're trying to welcome more and more people down there. I know that parking's been an issue since, you know, decades and decades and decades. And we're recouping costs now from the pandemic when we first went outdoors with the dining. And now people are paying, you know, to do that, what they should have been. The first year, it was, you know, for free because we didn't even know what was going to happen. And then we interested up there, I think, to 25% the next year in 2021, and then last year was full. And then this year, we've upped the fees for the barriers, you know, erecting them and then deconstructing them and moving them. So we're trying our best to, you know, not make it cost prohibitive. We want people to be able to go down there. And I know most people won't even feel that increase, but, you know, we've heard from some people who, you know, are on fixed incomes, who have, you know, they look at the percentage. And again, it doesn't matter if, you know, places in New York are a little higher, maybe being a little lower is not a bad thing either. So that's my only concern right now, I mean, percentage-wise, and I don't know what my colleagues have on that.
Again, I would just like to reiterate, right, that this is, I'm trying to create a difference, a value to parking in a long-term parking spaces. If you just increase it by a small percentage that would match the surrounding communities, which all charge more than we do, including Portchester, right? Portchester, Danbury, Stanford, they all charge more for their parking anyway, there's no difference, right? So it's not going to be strongly encouraging them to leave the avenue and park in the long-term lots, which we've been trying for, for a long time. And that's why, and again, I just want to say that it's a tiered approach. Greenwich Avenue, prime real estate, prime spots, cost more than the side roads. Side roads have gone up by a less increase. The long-term lots in the back also have gone up a small increase, 25 cents, right? And then ultimately, the permits, if you actually buy in advance, it's going off of the old rate. So this is an encouragement to get off the avenue, park in the back spots, and flow through. And this we can do without, well, you can do it with a stroke of a pen if you so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and DC Gray and I did have a conversation, because I, too, have received the feedback. And I don't know that everything that we got was sent to you. I know Ken was going to do that, but people did the form to kind of reach us. And most of it was, you know, negative towards the amount of the increase, and we talked about that. I was thinking more in comparison to the other business districts in town. So Cos Cob, there's no meters. Old Greenwich, there's no meters. So would we be encouraging shoppers to shop in other business districts? But you and I spoke that, you know, Greenwich Avenue is our primary business district, and that people, because of the types of stores there and the restaurants, would continue to come. I would feel more comfortable if it wasn't as high of an increase, but I understand where you're coming from. You're trying to move people off the avenue into the different lots. If there was some kind of compromise on the increase, or maybe phase it, you know, see how, you know, six months go and, you know, maybe wait another six months to get to that total figure.
Thank you. Janet?
My thoughts are pretty much in keeping. I know we have a very full agenda, so I'll try to keep my comments compact. Yes, we asked for community feedback on parking fees and outdoor dining, and we got what we asked for, so thank you to all who weighed in. And this is why, I'm just going to say it, it's important to have two reads of an agenda item to allow us to hear from a wide range of stakeholders. I know we're taking up these two items separately, but they're very much related, so I'm just going to note, I find it challenging that these have not been presented as part of a comprehensive plan. So I'm going to do my best to keep the question being considered, but I can't help but raise points that are going to spill over to the other. On parking fees, it's not surprising. No one wants to see the fees increase. It was pointed out in a number of emails that fees increased significantly several years ago, based on comparable rates in neighboring towns. And this time, the only comparison that was presented to us was from New York City, and I don't think that's a fair comparable. I also don't think parking fees should be thought of as a source of revenue. You know, we don't want privileges, parking privileges, to go to just those who can afford to pay. We're just using meters to fairly ration a limited resource. And many emails pointed out that the real issue here is enforcement. At our last meeting, it was pointed out that parking enforcement may not mark cars to keep tabs on meter feeders, but I'm thinking surely parking enforcement must have some idea of who those repeat offenders are and ticket accordingly. I think enforcement pays for itself. And I know, as Lauren mentioned, the proposed increases might not be large in terms of dollar amount, but they are in terms of percentages. And we're talking about doubling the fees on Greenwich Avenue. So generally speaking, when we increase fees, I think we should do it more moderately. And then at our last meeting, I noted that I thought the town is underpricing outdoor dining. And if we're primarily basing what we charge restaurateurs on lost parking revenue, then increasing parking fees will help make this correction. But at the moment, I'm not prepared to approve any increase until we compare our fees with those of neighboring towns. That's where I am.
Thank you.
Can I, just one point of order?
Sure.
Fees and fines are different. And so the fines from enforcement don't actually, aren't part of the parking fund. They'll go to the state, general funds of financial. None of the fines that we issue, it de-incentivizes the police from balancing a budget through fines. It goes straight to the state. The fees are for use. The fees go to, so the parking fees go to the town of Greenwich.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So, yeah, I mean, part of the reason for the second read is to get public input and, you know, to agree or disagree, but it's good for us to have that input when we make our decisions. So while I totally agree with what you're trying to do here, I do like the phased-in approach rather than, because people, again, perception's everything. They're just going to look at the percentage and say, they're doubling, even though the dollar amount's not a lot. But what you're trying to do is, main thing is to get people to the lots on the side streets, which we all agree with. So I'm thinking maybe if we can just, I liked your idea, maybe try something out for six months, half of it, and then see how that works. And then we at least have some type of, we've taken the public input into consideration, and we have a little bit of data to work with.
Of course. Just to be clear, though, are we, are you saying, because Greenwich Avenue is the one with the largest percent increase?
Yes.
Are you talking about the three phases? Because what we've done is, you know, it's, the side roads are a different cost than, so just the Greenwich Avenue change?
Because the side ones, you said, have only gone up a 25 cents?
25 cents.
Yeah, I don't think, we're not hearing about that. What I've heard, and maybe correct me, it was mainly the Main Theraphere, which was, yeah.
Which is the purpose, but, I understand, I understand.
No, we all get what you're trying to do here, and we, I think we all agree. But I think, you know, the public weighed in, and we're taking it into consideration. And this will give us a little bit of data to see if it's working. So I like that idea of maybe having it, you know, half in it, and, you know, see what, how that turns out. We could put a date, I think it would be probably better if we took this up again in two weeks, just to hear.
More public feedback.
No, not even that, just, I think we will get that, but certainly, just to have it presented again, where maybe Greenwich Avenue is maybe half of what the proposal is.
Oh, so you're asking me to go back and reevaluate that portion of it and come back to the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just, and then, again, I think, I don't know if we're going to hear that as much as we did this time, but I think it would be a little cleaner. And we certainly understand what you're trying to do here, and we'll be able to, anybody that reaches out next two weeks will be able to explain it a little bit better, too.
Yeah, because I think if we're supposed to sign something, if we did half, which is a dollar increase instead of $2 increase for two hours, and then six months from now is October, so sort of in October, November, in time for the holiday season, that second tranche of increase, we'll have the data.
Well, maybe we could reevaluate then to see what, how it worked in six months.
Well, I'm going to be a little bit more specific. Rather than just say, you know, let's look at half the increase, I do want to, you mentioned the rates in Portchester and Stanford. I would like to see those comparables.
We have them. But again, there's no perfect template, particularly because the inventory of parking spaces that we have in Greenwich is different than every other community, right? It's an old community. We don't have a parking garage, you know, I'll just say it, you know, Stanford has parking garages, but they don't have a central business district that we, the way we do on the avenue. So all these kind of pricing and cost and all the rest of it, it's very town-specific and environment-specific.
I think Rye, New York would be a little bit more comparable even than Portchester because it has that main road there, and they do have the side streets.
Sure.
Not as big, but certainly comparable.
Sure.
So maybe we could take a look at some of those. I appreciate it, thank you, and we're, we understand the direction we're going, so thank you. Thanks, Luanne.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Bill Eastday?
Yeah, because I think you have new business, right?
Oh, yes.
Yes. But do we skip our other?
No, I don't want to skip.
Yeah. Could we go out of order?
No, I can.
Well, you know, let's just keep the order, and so we'll call you back in a couple minutes.
Very good.
So, thank you. Next up, we have Ben Brannion, our town administrator and COO with an outdoor dining guideline. Morning, Ben.
Morning, all. Just a couple from the last meeting, just a couple comments that they received and just as we prepared for this meeting. You received several emails. Ken did share those with me. Just a reminder, P&amp;Z did a survey in August of last year. They received 2,200 responses. I think that's slightly more than the responses you may have received via email. But I think a couple, two data points were of interest. Of the 2,200 responses, 21, over 2,100 were Greenwich residents. So over 95% of the residents who were survey respondents were Greenwich residents, not from any other subcohort. 63% of those said they enjoy outdoor dining, and they didn't mind the loss of parking. And then 69% of them said no, that retailers should have access to the nodes. So there's just a couple data points that I think P&amp;Z used when they considered their tax amendment to their regulations. We've talked about enforcement. I think one thing that occurred last meeting is, and as Deputy Chief Gray mentioned, they do enforce on the avenue. They do not chalk the physical tire. They chalk around on the asphalt to avoid any issues with that. And speaking with our town planner, Pat LaRoe, P&amp;Z plans to step up their presence on the avenue as well, just for the enforcement. We did talk about barriers. And again, I'm just going there very quickly based on your agenda. Just a reminder, it's the traffic avenue, the vehicular traffic on the avenue is about 4,500 to 6,000 vehicles per day. That's why we prefer the concrete barrier, just has, I think, the safest barrier between diners and vehicular traffic, and particularly given the proximity to the travel lanes. We've talked about painting the barriers and the wrapping of the barriers. Painting certainly can be done, but it is tricky in the way we install the barriers. It's a crane where they clamp the barrier and will drop it. And if, we're not opposed to having the individual restaurants paint the barrier. They can work with P&amp;Z on that, although the difficulty is there's no guarantee they're going to get the exact same barrier next year. Those barriers are multiple use. We do not have them just for outdoor dining. We use them off-season as well for just routine, what you normally use a barrier for, for traffic enforcement. Platforms we talked about, platforms, just as we mentioned at the last meeting, the avenue is sloped relatively significantly. That creates some geometry problems when you're installing a flat barrier across several parking spaces. And I think, as Deputy Chief mentioned, it is a great reminder to use the merchant parking permits. And that's, as we mentioned, that's a significant value when you break it out per week or per day. And lastly, the, one of the merchants on Grigg Street mentioned they would like additional two-hour parking in the lot behind them. There's currently about four to five spots that are two-hour parking, and Parking Services is currently evaluating if it warrants additional short-term parking in that long-term lot. Those are the quick overview. The one difficulty we do have is we tried to time this request in conjunction with any decision you would have made for the parking fees on the avenue. So the difficulty is, we really cannot postpone this decision on outdoor dining, given the season begins April 3, and P&amp;Z will then work with all the restaurants to work through the permitting process. So it would be ideal to, whatever decision you make today, vote on outdoor dining, and will have an impact on the fee that we recover. The fee is paid upfront. We don't go back and try to collect afterwards, so they get to have their barrier installed once the check clears.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. I don't have the information in the packet from last time. We have to start saving them. But we spoke with Planning and zoning, sorry, DPW officials this week about some of the ideas that we had from last time. And, you know, there are some challenges with painting the barriers, but I think we decided we're going to reach out soon as they land in April. We're going to go out in the Reimagine Committee, we're going to go to the restaurants and try to get them to work with some ideas that we have that will beautify those barriers so that they don't look like they're on, they came from a turnpike. And it's, and some have some ideas. And, you know, we've seen it from other jurisdictions, whether in Europe or in this country or in another town, that look pretty good. Some may or may not work here, but we have a bunch of ideas. So we'll be working with them once, with the individual restaurant owners, once the barriers get up there. And also some other things we're working on.
Sorry if I missed this, Ben. Was there an opportunity or DPW to angle rather than square off, so to angle the barriers so that they're in line with the parking spaces?
What I say is, they essentially try to make onsite decisions when they install those, so they're nudging here or there. But what they're attempting to do is maximize the number of parking spaces. So if a half of stalls is taken, they try to figure out what can they do or can't do to do it. So they do their best to maximize the number of spots for their users, but also to align with the guidelines here that it's the storefront, no more than four spots. But certainly, they will do their best to figure out if it's worth to reinstall parallel with the parallel parking or the like. But I know some of the situations you're referring to.
And we also got feedback from some of the restaurants that don't have the same square footage as others, and they felt that, sorry, I'm hearing like whispering, and they felt that they might be penalized if we're not treating each restaurant fairly, just based on like how much of their sidewalk, you know, for the smaller restaurants.
That, it goes both ways. There's other restaurants that have significant frontage on the avenue, and then they would want, in the very beginning of our, of this project, they took all of the spots and further frontage. So we tried to strike a balance that we're just mirroring their existing frontage on the avenue. But certainly, the board can adjust the guidelines, but we ultimately just said, let's just stick what frontage you do have.
Okay, thank you.
Janet?
Thank you. At our last meeting, I noted that some outdoor dining is good for our town, but it relies on parking spaces, which is a limited resource. So it's our job to be, try to be fair to all the interest groups and come up with the right allocation between dining and parking, and make sure that sidewalk access and storefronts are not blocked. Further, in the feedback we received, it was pointed out that some handicap spaces were eliminated because of outdoor dining. And I'd like verification, but outdoor dining can't come at the cost of handicap spaces. So that's a question.
I'm almost positive, and I'm going to just prime our deputy commissioner of Public Works, Jim Michael, to shake his head yes or no after I make this comment. The couple of the situations where handicap parking was removed, we did reinstall that as close as we could. But I just want to make sure Jim responds. I got the thumbs up, so.
All right, good. All right, good. Okay. Phew. I did note that I thought that outdoor dining has been underpriced. And if we're basing prices on direct cost to the town, that doesn't reflect the market rate for outdoor dining spaces. And we can research how much restaurants pay in rent for indoor dining, but that's not exactly the same as what they'd be willing to pay for outdoor dining. So at best, we can only approximate this. But understanding that the town will revisit this question annually, this is an iterative process, and we can see how price increase affects demand. The proposal in front of us both increases prices and requires front of us both increases prices and requires restaurants to count outdoor seating in their total allowed seating capacity. And it wasn't noted at our last meeting, but I believe that the Health Department issues permits that limit seating based on kitchen capacity. And I think it's reasonable to say that outdoor dining should not be used as a way to get around those permits. So what I think you've proposed is the right approach. I also want to note that outdoor dining is a concession to restaurants, not a tax. And at the same time, many residents want to dine out without risking COVID or other illnesses. So outdoor dining is not simply a subsidy to restaurants. Generally speaking, I like to see how higher prices for outdoor dining. So to try to square the circle here, no, we haven't approved increases to parking fees at the moment, but I don't think, personally, I don't think we have to. I don't think we have to tie the two. I mean, like I said, we're approximating what we think the market value is. So I would be comfortable going ahead and voting on an increased fee that doesn't necessarily depend on increased parking fees.
And a lot of it is the guidelines, as you mentioned. It's, we're shoring it up, tightening it up now. So in the past, we're, you know, people may have been, a restaurant may have been full inside with patrons. They were allowed to go outside. So here, what zoning has done is made it a little bit fairer to everybody and saying, well, if you have, you know, 40% of your patrons indoor, then you can put 60% outdoor. It's got to equal that 100%. So it's tightening up now, and it's becoming more fair, which, again, the first year and into the second year, because we weren't really sure what was going to happen, we wanted them to stay in business, and we wanted the merchants to stay in business. And they end up having their two best years. So we figured it out that it really works, and people love it, but we also want to be fair. So little by little, we're getting there. So, and this is the biggest jump yet. So I would support the guidelines as presented.
Just very, on the fair market value issue, I did attempt to go down that rabbit hole. Just very briefly, it's 150, approximately 150 square feet per stall. So if the average is three stalls per restaurant, that'll be 450 square feet. And just to state the obvious, outdoor space is not the same as indoor space. Working with the town assessor, she randomly pulled a couple, about seven restaurant properties on the avenue, but with their assigned fair market value per square foot, on average, it's just over 1,000. So 1,036 was the average assessor fair market value of an indoor restaurant on the avenue. You do the math just to get a seasonal based on 199 days. The gross number is over a quarter of a million dollars of, again, state the obvious, what's the discount factor? You would apply to that number because it's not an indoor space, doesn't have walls, ceiling, indoor plumbing, electrical, all those issues. I joke with our assessor, would you want to give me a discount factor? And she politely declined. It's just given the academic issue, but I hear your point. There is a value. I think the difficulty part this year, the interesting part this year is it is no, it's a zero-sum game, and as we mentioned, the tables and the chairs. So they're not increasing their seating capacity, but they do have real estate that's increased.
No, but what you're, so I'm trying to do math in my head, and what you were saying was that the fee without an increase to parking fees would be something like $5,000 per restaurant. Is that right?
Yeah, using the average of 199 service days with outdoor dining, the parking fee as currently, which is the dollar per hour. So it's eight hours per day, Monday through Saturday. We don't count Sundays. So the season that we're approving would have an average parking fee of 1,592 per stall. Usually, the restaurants would use three, some would use less. That coupled with the barrier number, you get an average around $5,700 per restaurant.
Right. But what you're saying, what I'm hearing, though, is that, okay, let's assume that parking fees go up 50%. We're talking $8,000, it goes up to $8,000 if we're talking about they're doubling. I'm talking about Greenwich Avenue. We're talking about what? Something under $12,000? Compare $12,000 to a quarter of a million. I mean, it seems to me like we could go ahead and increase those fees without being, you know, overly onerous. Again, this is not, I'm not looking at outdoor dining as a significant revenue for the town. What I'm trying to do is try to, trying to figure out how to allocate fairly between all the different user groups.
Thank you. Okay, Ben, thank you so much. I'm ready to vote on the guidelines as presented, so thank you.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the 2023 outdoor dining guidelines.
I'm not sure if I want to second because, okay, Fred is going to second.
I'll second it. And all those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Ben, thanks so much for all the work on that and all the details. Very helpful. And we're going in the right direction there to present some equity balance. Okay, next up, we have the Board of Selectmen review of the ADA grievance from Alan Gunsberg and Stephanie Cowie. Assistant Attorney Amin Ahmed is here. I don't know if Steph or Alan's here, but, oh, okay. While we're waiting, I did, I met with Jim and Amy from DPW to go over some things to look into how to make that intersection ADA compliant and make it the safest possible intersection, because it is right now the most dangerous one. And that's why, again, that the grant that was worked for, for $2.8 million, that passed every board and committee for a year and was appealed to the RTM, and the RTM rejected it. So that $2.8 million went back into a pool and was now claimed by other municipalities. So we will now be paying for it on our own dime. So that's too bad, but we have to, it's something that you can't push off. We, I know Demetra Nelson has mentioned that we would have realistically 12 to 24 months to bring it up to speed, but that is a long time. And we've already had three people hit at that, in that area in the last year and a half or so. So we're, we have to move on a lot quicker than 12 to 24 months. So, and there's Demetra. So we are gathering that information. And I know Alan and Steph had mentioned that they would be willing to give us a little bit more time as we gather the information about how much this will cost so we can present it. So, thank you.
Good morning again. I just found out that Mr. Gunsberg and Ms. Cowie apparently did not know that this was on the agenda for today. Ms. Nelson just reached out to them, and that's what we were told. So I'm not sure if you'd like to put this on another agenda to have them speak to it again, or if you'd like to use this opportunity to speak with Jim Michael. So it's really your call.
Sure. Well, we spoke last time with Alan. He had mentioned that he was not pushing the town to make the decision to, he certainly knows that we're, there's some thought that has to go into this about what is going to be done to make it compliant and also nice, so it doesn't look terrible. But we have to make it compliant and inclusive. And now we're just trying to see what that is and what it will look like and how much it will cost so we can present to the BET. So I don't know, maybe Jim, if he has any timeframe on when we'll have that information. Thank you, Jim. And thanks, Amin.
We'll do our best to get it as quickly as possible. We have plenty of stuff going on in the Public Works there. But yeah, we'll, we'll be looking to get some ideas and answers over the next month or so of what it's going to run, what the improvements will potentially be. We did reach out to Alan and Steph about setting up kind of an internal, working back and forth with them, where we'll come up with some ideas, we'll present them to them, make sure that we're all on the same page, and then move it forward to come back to you guys with, this is what we're planning on doing. So I think that's kind of a good approach of how we wanted to handle this. In addition, I know that something came up at either one of the meetings or has been discussed with Alan and Steph about getting what we call our ADA transition plan posted on the website. That has been posted up on the website as of this morning. We got that up on there. And I'm going to work with them on making sure that if they wanted to put it, we put it on the Public Works site. But if they want to add, if we want to add a link onto the ADA Selectmen's Committee on that, we'll probably look to put a link there as well so that, it's in a couple different spots. So it should be there if people are looking for it, if they wanted to search the town website. But I know that was something that was a big, important thing for Alan and company, and so we have taken care of that part.
Well, thank you, Jim. And I'll reach out to Alan and Steph. So there's, within that timeframe, month, month and a half, there'd be no reason to put it on the agenda in two weeks. I will reach out to Alan and Steph going forward later today.
So I just have a question. I understand, we're not, we're not going to vote on this. When we do vote, what would the motion be that's put before us?
Well, we have to see what's going to be presented. We don't know what's going to be presented yet.
Yes. So if I may just bring us back to the ADA policy, which does have some deadlines. As I had mentioned at your meeting last time, there was a 15-day deadline for the board to issue a written decision on this grievance after having a meeting on the issue. So Mr. Gunsberg and Ms. Cowie had said they wouldn't have any objection to it moving forward to this meeting. So here we are. And again, there's a 15-day period within which the board is required to issue a written finding or decision. You could postpone it to the next meeting if that's your preference, or you could, you know, give us some guidance as to whether, you know, you'd like us to draft a decision so that there is that provision in the policy.
So I misunderstood, Alan, because I thought that the 15-day deadline had been, he had, and Steph had said that they were okay, postponed, pushing that back. So that's why
Yes.
there's no written decision right now.
Exactly. And the pushing it back was to this meeting. So the clock would start again today for another 15 days, and I have not had a chance to speak with Mr. Gunsberg or Ms. Cowie. I'll certainly reach out to them after this meeting and ask if they would be willing to grant an extension of that 15-day period. And if the answer is yes, then perhaps it could be put back on your agenda for, you know, future meeting.
It'll be 13 days. It'll be 13 days. Sorry. Thank you, Jenny. It'll be 13 days from now. So I'll reach out to you after this afternoon, and then
I'll find out.
we'll get going on that, and then we'll have something for the 13.
Yes, and then we can draft a decision on this issue. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Going on to new business, we have the approval appointment, approval of the appointment of Assistant Fire Chief Justin McCarthy. And Chief McHugh is here. And Justin's here.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman and Board of Selectmen. We have the honor of introducing Justin McCarthy as our hopeful new assistant chief to take the place of Chief Kozak. Justin comes from us from the New Haven Fire Department. We're very fortunate to have him. He was, well, I say was now, he is a rising star in the New Haven Fire Department, and we're very fortunate to get him here in the town of Greenwich. He comes with a lot of experience in New Haven, working on several busy companies and a lot of, he's assistant chief there now. So I think his knowledge and skill set and his abilities will benefit this department and this town. So I introduce you to Justin.
Thank you so much, Chief. Good morning, Justin. Congratulations.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this opportunity. And if appointed, I look forward to serving the town of Greenwich.
Thank you. We appreciate your putting your resume in there and putting yourself out there and being willing to join our fire department here. So thank you, and thanks, Chief Labouecky. Any questions?
I don't speak, Charlie. He usually speaks.
I don't have any questions, but don't we usually get a little info before?
Yeah, well, this, normally, we do, we get the information on the candidate. And in the past, the interviews, I was out of it until the end. This time, I wasn't involved with it, which I understood. You kept me up to date when everything. Is it possible if we could, because again, I don't, my colleagues haven't, don't have any information on this. So maybe if we could get a little bit of a bio, and maybe if you could just, for now, just tell us a little bit about yourself and how many years you've served in New Haven and some of the things you worked on, maybe some of the initiatives?
Sure. So I'm born and raised in Westport, Connecticut. My father was the assistant chief of the Westport Fire Department, retired in 2003. After I left Westport, I obtained a fire science degree from the University of New Haven and worked for the Wilton Fire Department for a year, went to New Haven, served there, rose through the ranks. I also obtained a law degree from Quinnipiac Law, served on their executive board of the union for a number of years, about 10 or so years, served on various committees, put through numerous initiatives, ran the safety committee throughout the time I was on the executive board, which was the only union-appointed position on the board for safety. From there, I was asked to run citywide logistics, and this is a very brief bio, citywide logistics for COVID-19. So I was moved off of the line and into that role by the chief and the managers of the city. I served in that capacity for about a year before being appointed in 2021 to the role of assistant chief, where I served as the number two for the city. Been there for just over two years now, and since we've been there, we've had a numerous, numerous movements. One of the biggest is a movement towards more IT in the department that was able to reduce our number of grievances from the union from about 85 to 90 a year down to about 5 to 80 a year, which was a very big move for us. Since then, we've worked very well with the union to put to bed a lot of past animosity that came from a union labor management relationship, which was very positive because it's allowed for us to progress the department forward very quickly and allowed us to put forth a lot of initiatives. And then working with Chief Alston in the city of New Haven, we've put forth numerous diversity plans for both hiring and promotion.
Thank you. Does New Haven have a volunteer corps there?
New Haven does not. Wilton did when I was there, and I also served as a volunteer in Westport.
Okay, okay. And right, you're currently residing in, how far from Greenwich? Just to...
So currently, I'm residing in Westport. So, yeah, it's much closer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That was going to be my question. Where do you live? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's, does come, it may seem like, you know, a throwaway question, but it actually can be
Important.
Understandable, yeah.
Can be important, so.
I don't need to postpone. I just needed a sense of, I don't need to postpone the vote personally, but I don't know how Janet feels.
Well, so I'm glad you asked those questions. Those would be the same questions I asked, and I'm just going to say, great to meet you. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Pleasure, ma'am. Thank you. Well, we look forward to working with you for many years to come, Justin. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good luck to you. Pleasure.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Justin McCarthy to Assistant Fire Chief?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, Chief, your backup. Okay, Chief, your backup. Parking Services, Mobile App Enforcement, you got DC, you got three in a row here, so.
Confusing when you're calling him chief.
Always call him chief.
It is a shorthand, right? It looks like chief, but...
You call the LG, you call governor when you say it.
So I'll try to move quickly through these, respectful of your time and everyone's time on it. Certainly, the first one is least controversial. It's the mobile app, no payment one. This is basically housekeeping. It's really just to make it easier for the hearing officers when someone opposes a fine. Basically, all it is, is recognizing that we have a mobile app, and it's not necessarily a meter. It's just the way in which the time was managed, right? So we've been actually issuing tickets because of the violation. It's a time violation. It's just recognizing that the way in which it was accounted for was the mobile app. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. So... So, questions, comments? Okay, so, all right.
Actually, it's, is this a first read?
Yeah, it's a first read.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, unless it's time-sensitive.
Nope.
Okay. I, I don't think we're going to get a lot of feedback on that, but we'll, we'll stay consistent if it's not, if it's not
Understood.
Going on to number two.
Josephine Avaristo. Okay, so
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the Josephine Avaristo is a, basically a reversal of the residential permit parking. This was at the behest of a group of residents in that area. What had happened was is that the signage originally for, on the ordinance was not matching. So ordinance, the ordinance read a particular location, it didn't match all the way down to Charles Street. We put the signs in to match the ordinance, and the residents found that it was something they weren't interested in. So based upon that, we reevaluated it. I am always in favor of returning as much of the parking to the public as possible, you know, so we received limited response from the community after we sent the letter. We sent a letter for a month, January, we sent it for over a month, and they had an opportunity to respond back. We had one for, one against.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I know, I see one local resident here who may want to say a couple of words.
You're the petitioner, right?
Yeah.
The petitioner's here.
Yeah. And just, Sylvester, just state your name.
Sylvester.
Yeah, thanks.
Sylvester Pacora, representing Sylvester Pacora Senior and Mo LaParco, who've lived on Charles Street at the bottom of Avaristo for, I think, over 50 years, very long time. As Deputy Chief Gray stated, there was an ordinance that wasn't really enforced, and the signs went up to make it all consistent, which we understand, and this was the only way to back it out. And it's only from Arctic Street to, south of Arctic, to Charles Street is what we're looking for, to remove those signs for residents parking only. We own many houses on Charles Street, Hamilton Avenue, and this would help the whole community as a whole for, for eliminating those signs.
As presented.
As presented.
Okay, thank you, Sylvester.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So these aren't, this isn't what's close to like the Post Road where, what is it now, Chicken Coop or something?
Correct.
Okay, so that one will still
That will be, that, so it'll be from West Putnam Avenue down to Arctic? When it comes down, Josephine Avaristo? I'll have to look at it.
It goes between Charles and, and the Post Road.
It's already being eliminated from Arctic to Charles.
Right, the bottom.
Everything else stays the same.
Everything else remains the same. It's just that last little bit that was not marked. So it's going back to the way that basically the practice had been, and we received no complaints.
Got it, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Just, so again, I'm going to ask, this is a first read?
First read.
Well, all three of them are.
Okay, that's great. Could you, you said that you had a public comment?
We received, the Parking Services received two, yes.
Could you forward that to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, thank you. And then the third would be the Bruce Park Avenue area, which we did receive some feedback.
And again, I'll be brief, because again, this one is relatively straightforward. The Parking Services as well as the Engineering Division received some complaints about the safety aspect of traveling on Bruce Park Avenue. The engineer, Michael Kislik, is here who did the study. The study is right in front of you, and I don't want to speak for him, but again, this is a long, brewing issue. We do have, again, some public comments that came from the residents. We sent out some notices. I do see that some of the local residents are here, and if I would, maybe I'll just turn it over to Michael to kind of explain the, some of the briefly in the engineering aspects.
Sure, thank you, Jim.
Michael?
Yeah, and then I sent some pictures to Ken this morning of the, the road. I don't know if you had a chance to look at them. It may be helpful to see actually what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is, yeah, you can't, it's an aerial, so you can't tell that there's a hill there, but. Yeah, Michael Kislak, civil engineer with the Department of Public Works.
Michael's right. So I visited this and met with neighbors, some of the residents on November 22nd of last year, and very familiar with the road and the area, and when you're driving it, you're going up a hill there, and it's, it can be hard to see. And that was, you know, the, the main part of the, you know, the meeting that day. And so that really doesn't, it's hard to see from that picture, but thank you for.
Yeah, it's fairly obvious if you drive out there that it's a pretty sharp curve coming, a hill coming up both sides. So we did a stopping site distance study after we met with the neighbors, a group of neighbors out there. It was myself, Deputy Chief Gray, and then Pete Kerbesky and Nick Charla from our Highway Division met with the residents. We did a stopping site distance study, which is basically the distance that a vehicle needs to be able to see in front of them to identify an object and then come to a safe stop, which is for a 25 mile an hour road, it's about 150 feet, a little bit more if you're going downhill because of gravity. And so the results of the study are basically that you can't see, you have blind spots until you've pretty much reached the top of the curve. You can't see something that's 150 feet or less in front of you until you basically have crested the curve. And then, so that coupled with the narrowness in the road, of the road and the on-street parking, the road is less than 20 feet wide in some spots, which is less than we would like for, for two lanes without on-street parking. So you can be in a situation where two cars are, you know, they cross over the center of the road if there's on-street parking, and could be driving head-on, or there could be something in the road, and they can't see that until they basically met at the top. And so that's, the recommendation is to eliminate parking, on-street parking for like a 280-foot segment, so 140 feet is what we decided on, on each side of the, the curve. There's already no parking on the north side of the road, so it's about seven spaces on the south side, give or take, that would be eliminated. Depends on how closely people pack in, because they're not striped spaces, but it's approximately, you know, seven. And so that's our engineering recommendation. It's pretty straightforward, I think.
Thanks, Michael. And the next two weeks, we'll try and get some input from some of the residents, being familiar with it, and I agree, it's a public safety hazard. Just to dial in back though on those, who, those, how many spaces would we be losing? You said seven?
It's about seven, give or take.
Those, and I, I'm trying to remember, wasn't there a whole house there, a couple that didn't have much parking? Because I'm trying to figure out, somebody that's living there that, to make sure that they have, they have a place to put their car, too. And, you know, is there, and if they don't, is there a way to, you know, in the front, front of their yard? I, you know, I'm trying to remember. I think there was, I saw some hands go up there. I do remember a couple of houses there that had some issues.
Yeah, I mean, it's actively used. You know, every time I've driven out there, there are cars parked there, but, so our engineering recommendation is, is a safety, you know, for a safety hazard, and that's kind of what it is, and then it would be, you know, the board's purview if they wanted to take that or not.
Well, thank you, Michael. I appreciate it. What we're going to do, I probably, as soon as we get to the public comment, if you'd like to end here, we're not that far off, I'd love to hear some of your thoughts from the residents there. That would be, just to, if, starting off our two-week period, so since there's, they're here right now, we're on this, I'd love to just to hear, you know, if you can come up and just state your name, that would be great. Thanks, Michael.
Hi, thank you for listening to us. My name is Patty Thibault Hopper, and my mated name is Thibault, T-H-I-B-A-U-L-T. My married name is Hopper, H-O-P-P-E-R. I'm the youngest of six siblings. I'm with my three brothers here, Paul, Victor, and Alan, and we were all born and raised in Greenwich, and, and we are here in regarding the proposed parking ordinance, and we are opposed it, or in opposition of it. My father bought 287 Bruce Park Avenue July 13th of 1962. We've had it in the family for 61 years. It's a two-family, if you want to hold this up. It's a two-family house, and Bruce Park Avenue, it's on the, it's on the top of the hill on the left side. My father bought this house for rent and for, you know, his livelihood, his income and for retirement. My parents have passed away, and they gave the house to my brother Alan. He's over there, and he's 63, and he uses this money for everyday use. It's his, also his retirement. So the house right here, as you can see, has no, this is the house, there's no driveway, there's no, so for, there's a two-family house, and for 61 years, the tenants have always parked, sorry, in front of, that's right, this one, in front of the house. And so there's two spots here, and it's, and recently, the tenants have to go to the town hall and get permits to park there, and they've always had those two, right, right in front of the house. So to take these, oh, also, the, the town of Greenwich owns most of this property in front of the house. It owns it to, the, can you, sorry, we're all over the place.
You're doing great.
Okay, so you go up, you have to, you have to climb, climb up, nine, nine to 10 steps, walk. The town owns all of this, okay? And then you have to walk up another seven steps. Whoever is a tenant on the second floor, that's another 14 steps. So there's a lot of walking and, you know, going up. So my father never put in a driveway because the town owns the majority of the prop, the front yard. So taking away these spots will financially affect the rent income for my brother in a negative way. The amount charged for rent will have to be decreased because where will, where will the tenants park? And if you look to the left, so I park there, but this is, if you look to the left, you And if you look to the right, there's parking. Now, this is at 9:30 in the morning, so there's a lot of open spaces, but at 5 o'clock, everyone, it's crowded. So where will the tenants park? But right as of now, they have permits, they go to the town hall and they get to, you know, their parking permits to park there. So my brother relies on this money for everyday living. So, and for the past 61 years, you know, my dad has gone, maintained the property, so has Alan, and we always have, we drive slow, and we have never heard of anyone having a problem with the road. I went to the Department of, or I emailed the Department of Records, and they had 93 MVAs accidents for the past 10 years. And so we went through these, and not one accident was in front of that house. It was all like on Mason Street and, yeah, like Havemeyer. So nothing has occurred, there's not, hasn't been one accident on that side of, or that, on the hill. And Bruce Park is kind of a quirky road where you have the, you know, you have that side, and then it goes all the way to Greenwich Avenue. So this is the first of us hearing about the problem, and there's been, no one has been hurt. Also, at the beginning of the road, it said there's a 25 mile an hour sign. I think that should be lowered, it should probably like be 15, and there's no warning signs to go slow or like the hill. So instead of like removing these spots, why don't we start with putting signs up? So, so we are opposed to removing the spots, and I guess that's it.
Patty, thank you so much, and
I don't know if you have anything else to say.
Thank you to all the brothers, minus one, I think.
Two, two.
Two. But one of the questions I was going to ask about is if the town owns some of the property there, and you answered that. And signage certainly is something, I think, that was talked about before, but there may be some, some ways here in this two-week period of public comment to go over some possibilities, because that, public safety is always our main concern, and it always will be. But we also don't want to hurt people, especially in the case where maybe there wasn't an accident in that particular spot. Doesn't mean that you don't, there couldn't be one, but certainly, there may be some other options here that would not take away their right to park there, and really, I, I personally believe would affect rental prices and convenience, and would create another concern if someone's parking too far away at night and walking up there and maybe getting hit if they're not wearing like colors. So, I mean, there's always consequences of things, but I think there may be some ways here to fix this problem, and maybe we can, we can, in the coming, you know, this week and next week, talk about some of them, Michael.
If, if there's no other public comment, yeah, I was going to say.
Oh, yeah, we do, we do have one, one more.
We also have two hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, Michael's got the floor first.
Yeah, just real quick, I, you know, I checked the state database for crash records, and I, I saw three, I'll double-check it, and I'll check with the police department for the next read. We'll, we'll get a, you know, an answer on if there's been any, if there are, if there have been any incidents there, we can, we can touch on that next time. As far as the speed limit, I wouldn't put a lot of stock in lowering the speed limit. The state would have to approve it, and they generally don't go less than 25 miles an hour, just because it's unreasonable to enforce and to expect drivers to comply with that. So 25 is really the lowest they'll let us go in any case that I've seen around town, other than like school zones for certain times of day. I don't know that there's any specific signage that we could do in accordance with the manual that, that we follow, but we can double-check that and see, and see for next time. But again, it wouldn't solve the stopping site distance, but certainly see where they're coming from, and happy to look into it.
Yeah, and I think, I, thank you, and I have seen some sites where, some signs in the past, don't ask me where, where it says a blind curve and things like that, so, but also, I'd like to maybe circle back with the owners of the houses affected and the town to see if there's any other thing we can do there. And this may take a little bit of time, but if everybody was willing to, to look at that, maybe reclaiming some of the town property and creating a little bit of parking there, that would certainly solve it, too. So I know it costs money, but, you know, it's better than having an accident and, you know, ruining somebody's, devaluing somebody's home.
Sure. Yeah, there's a lot of ledge there, so it would be, you know, expensive, but we'll, we'll look into it, and
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay. Thank you.
Barbara Zapavina. I live at two, yes, Z-A-P-P-A-V-I-G-N-A. I live at 292 Bruce Park Avenue, and I've been there not 61 years, but 33. When we met, and I want to thank Fred and the town for meeting with us in November, the issues, as I recall, were that people are speeding down that street, and, and the signage for the fact that it is a dead end is very, is not as prevalent as we, we felt it could be. So that's one of the things that I think we could look at changing. Seven spaces is a lot to take away on that street. I mean, people struggle now to find parking, and I've seen it over the, the years I've been there. So I'm grateful that you're willing to look into it. I understand what my neighbors, you know, are going through, and I feel for them, and I understand where they're coming from. So if we could look at some alternatives, a speed bump, just to slow people down, that was the issue, because people think it's a cut-through to 95, they're not paying attention that it's a dead end. So if we could look at that, I, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. We don't want to do any harm, so we want to fix a problem without creating another problem.
Thank you.
And we have two hands that are
We have to go down to one.
Okay, if we can promote Jessica?
Hi. Hello. Sure, it's Jessica Wieneke, W-I-E-N-E-K-E.
Hi, Jessica.
Homeowner at 310 Bruce Park Avenue. I think that one of the most important I think that one of the most important aspects of this is the, in the safety part, is that there is no sidewalk on that crest. And, you know, the neighborhood, there's a lot of young children in the neighborhood now. So there's really a way to walk up that crest safely as, as with, you know, as a person. There's a lot of people that walk to the train without nearly getting hit by oncoming traffic on both ends. So I think that a lot of, a lot of my neighbors in that lower portion, our concern is that there is no, there's no safe way for pedestrians to pass over that crest. We, as far as parking, myself and a lot of the homeowners in our condos have noticed there's a lot of commercial traffic, there's a lot of businesses over there in that dead end, in the Davis Avenue area where people are parking during the day to go to work or I see people walk there, you know, walk there from work at like 7, 8 PM. So a lot of this residential parking is being occupied by, by people that work in the area. There's an auto body place at the start of the street that occupies several parking spots when you first enter the street. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that a lot of this safety concern is not just when you're in a car coming up the crest, but there's no safe passage for pedestrians and several of us have small kids and pets that we walk, et cetera. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank, thank you, Jessica. Appreciate your, your weighing in. And I think that was the end of it. So, all right, so we have some time and we'll, we'll circle back on this and try and come up with a solution to, to make it a little bit safer, but also to not create any, any more problems.
Did you say that there has already been some public comment on this?
Well, people who are aware of it, but this is the first read, so.
I was just going to say.
The town as a whole, no, but that, the neighborhood has been.
I was just going to say, if you could forward to this board any, any comment, like, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. Okay, so that's it, so thank you, Chief. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. All right, so those are first reads and now we're going to go to discussion of the adoption of a fair rent commission with Selectwoman Janet Strohm-McWiggin.
Thank you. So I bring before this board a discussion item regarding the adoption of a fair rent commission ordinance as required by Public Act 2230. And I don't have to remind anyone that there has been much media attention to affordable housing. And so therefore, I'd like to caution that while fair rent and affordable housing may be related issues, in this discussion, they should not be conflated. There was also proposed legislation in Hartford that would cap rent increases, but that's been tabled. Again, I want to caution that we not conflate that proposal with this act. Public Act 2230 was passed in, in 2022 and is law and concerns rent stabilization, not rent control. For those in the audience not familiar with Public Act 2230, it requires towns with populations greater than 25,000 to adopt a fair rent commission ordinance no later than July 2023. This applies to Greenwich. Ordinances require the approval of the RTM and as the May RTM meeting is devoted to the town budget, we may already be too late to get an ordinance approved by July. While the law does not impose penalties on towns not in compliance, we put the town at risk when we don't comply with state law. So I recently attended a workshop sponsored by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and creating a fair rent commission is pretty straightforward. This town already has 22 boards, commissions and committees which perform much of the governing work of this town. A fair rent commission is a municipal board with a primary power to restrict rental charges in residential housing that are, quote, "so excessive as to be harsh and unconscionable." It does not restrict rents generally and landlords remain free to charge whatever they want. It's triggered only by a tenant complaint and only by a show by the tenant that the rental charge is harsh and unconscionable according to a prescribed list of standards. I'm not in favor of creating a commission simply for the sake of creating a commission, but that's not the case here. With certain exceptions, Connecticut tenants have no right to challenge a rent increase except in a town with fair rent commissions. In the absence of a fair rent commission, a tenant who refuses to accept an increase can either move or risk eviction by refusing to pay the higher rent. Connecticut courts have no general authority to decide whether a rent increase is unconscionable or unfair. Or to state it another way, courts can only look backwards in time at damages that are claimed by one party against another. Courts can't consider damages that have not yet been incurred. In a town like Greenwich, where a significant percentage of households rent, it's critical that we create a fair rent commission. Administratively, this volunteer commission would be overseen by the Department of Human Services. In periods of stable rent, we can anticipate that there would be very few cases brought before it. I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but I'm hardly a subject matter expert. I will point to the toolkit with model ordinances that were, was provided by CCM. And I note that we have our, our town attorney, Barbara Schellenberg, in the audience who can answer questions as well, as well as others. So, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. So this is something I've been paying attention to since they passed the law, which I had some concerns about. Having spent 11 years in a legislature, I would see landlords come up there and beg for some help and the housing committee would always ignore them. Where people were, you know, routinely not paying the rent for six to eight months and then going on to the next house and next, and so there was a lot of abuse. And so my concern when this was passed was that it'd be, whatever commission is, it's balanced. And we also know that there's sometimes there are people, and I've recently been helping two people who were up to date on their rent, but because rents have gone up, I'm guessing that the landlord did not want them there. And in one case, there was some issue of maintenance of the house, was not kept up. So it swings both ways. So I think this commission could have a great potential to not only afford people a voice to, to air their grievances, but to settle it before having to go to court. Because usually, one, sometimes even both parties may not have the funds to go to court. And if this can help in any way, I think it's something that could serve, could really serve the community well. So I did speak with our town attorney and it looks like they're, you know, they're not going to be any penalties as towns are going forward with this, but I'd rather get it done sooner than, rather than later. But I just want to make sure, as I said at the beginning, that this would be something that is fair and balanced and can be used for the good. Because again, I, we all hear some horror stories on both sides of this issue and we're not, we're trying to help people who are just doing the right thing. Whether it's somebody paying rent, somebody who, who has a, a house that they have for, for income, and in some cases, that's their only income. So I think this has great potential. And I spoke with one of our state delegation who was in agreement with this. So this is something I think that we should, you know, before the, you know, the deadline that we can maybe have this. But this, I do think it may, it may have to come from either the, the commission or the, the RTM, the human services. I, I don't know, maybe Barbara can clarify, our town attorney.
And as she's walking up, I just want to clarify, landlords do have recourse in courts right now if tenants don't pay rent and this ordinance would not take away that ability.
Yeah, no, I, we, but when this was passed, we didn't have all the details and so that's why I made the statements that, you know, not getting out in front of this, because again, I've seen so many abuses and in 11 years, I've testified before that housing committee and it's, it was not balanced at all. So that's why I just wanted to make sure that this, that didn't repeat itself here.
Right, so as has been mentioned, we believe that Health and Human Services would be the appropriate department or that commission would be the appropriate commission to put forth an ordinance that of course would be reviewed by the law department and, you know, go through that process. And toward that end, we had a meeting last week with Demetria Nelson, Ben Branyan and Tyler Fairburn to discuss it. So I don't know if maybe Demetria has an update on it, anything that you might want to add at this point?
Maybe while Demetria's coming up, I, I need probably more information and would need to see the ordinance for sure, but I, my small, small concern is, yes, you mentioned we have 22 boards, commissions and committees and some of them overlap, so I would want that addressed in the ordinance. So how does this commission work with, you know, the housing authority, for example? Because there'll be tenants likely in the housing authority, how does it work with the Board of Human Services? So I would love to see, because I'm sure the toolkit is really cool, but you know, we're going to have our own unique circumstances within Greenwich because of the multiple boards, commissions and committees that we have, that there is overlap.
Thank you. So we will use the toolkit to put together the framework, but we will definitely tailor it to the needs of our town. And I really don't have much of an update, just to let you know, I have reached out to some neighboring towns that already have fair rent commissions, just to find out, you know, the volume, but they're, you know, different towns, different municipalities than us. I was able to speak to someone in Norwalk and they have a full-time person that is responsible because I think on average, they had approximately 57 complaints that they had to deal with within a month for the last three months, that was the average. But they haven't had any that had to go to court in the last three months. So I know that their population, like I said, is a little bit different than ours, but there are many neighboring towns that are in the same position that we are in and they're in the process of developing their fair rent commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Demetria. Okay, any other comments?
So I guess what would, what would the next step be that, that we would ask?
We want to see if, if they're going to, they can develop, develop a policy that we would review and that would ultimately go to the RTM and hopefully to do so before, the RTM doesn't meet in July, so hopefully we get, I'm sure they're going to be, they won't be as, they'll be a little bit lenient, but if we can get it done before, great, but if not, at least they'll know that we're working on it. I think that's the main thing.
Exactly. Well, thank you very much for everybody's consideration.
Thank you. That's something that we have to comply with and I think there is some potential there to really help people along and keep them out of court and keep, keep money in their, their own pocket, right? So that's, that'd be a good thing if we could do that. Next up, we have a request for approval of the 2023 Greenwich Town Party Parade with Scott Wyker, who's been waiting patiently.
Good morning, Scott.
Selectwoman Raven, Selectperson McWiggin. How good to see you all this morning. So I'm here before you to present a new event for the Greenwich Town Party. This is a parade. This parade is in addition to the Greenwich Town Party, takes place on Saturday, May 27th. With 60,000 residents plus those who work in Greenwich and a capacity of only 8,000 at the Roger Sherman Ballpark, there are only so many individuals of Greenwich Town Party in touch and it's just, we just don't have the capacity. A parade.
Push, push the microphone. There you go.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I didn't, I didn't realize, I'm sorry. Can everyone hear me now? A parade gives the Greenwich Town Party the opportunity to include even more of the community in this celebration. So let me review the specifics of what I'm requesting. Specifically, approval of the Greenwich Town Party 23 Parade with accompanying road closures. GTP, this would take place on Tuesday, May 23rd, leading up to the Greenwich Town Party. The time would be 5:15 to 6:00 PM. The parade mission would be to further the Greenwich Town Party's nonprofit mission of creating an annual celebration for the people of Greenwich by adding a parade on the Tuesday leading up to the Greenwich Town Party. A parade promotes the three tenants of the Greenwich Town Party, celebrate, community and participate. The parade would feature live music from local bands such as the Greenwich High School in Brunswick, live music from other bands such as the Preservation Hall Brass Band. We'd have a couple floats, we'd have a couple still walkers, we'd involve community groups, nonprofits and community organizations. And we're still working on the parade details at this point. We didn't want to go too far without Board of Selectmen approval. So in regards to the parade route, we would stage it at the Amagerone Parking Lot and we've been in touch with Luann, who's right here, about that and Deputy Chief Craig. We'd stage there, we would go up to Amagerone Crossway, left on Amagerone Crossway, down, left on Greenwich Avenue, down Greenwich Avenue, cross over at Lewis Street, East Elm Street, Arch Street and take a right on Grigg Street, go down Grigg Street, take a right on Arch Street and left into Bowling Place. there would be a post-parade party in the park at the Havemeyer Field. And this would be from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock and would feature live music and we'd have some Greenwich licensed food trucks there. And we propose to just give free food to all those who participate and it would just be an event of fun, food and friendship. And so I'm here this morning to respectfully request your approval of the Greenwich Town Party Parade on Tuesday, May 23rd. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Scott. And you and I spoke about it, so I don't have, my colleagues will have more questions, but it's exciting, you know, and it's, it reminds me of growing up here, we, the town would have a party in the fall and there would usually be a Sunday in, in the fall and they would basically close down Greenwich Avenue and it was all day long. And so that, this really harkens back to that, that era. So I know that was, when you first were planning the town party.
It was exactly the thinking, Fred. Exactly.
That's interesting, that's great.
And it's our opportunity to touch more individuals. I mean, it's tough with a limited capacity and we'd like to bring this celebration and touch so many more Greenwich residents and local, local people who work in town Greenwich.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Turn it over to my colleagues.
Yeah, no, it's, it's totally exciting and thankfully you didn't pick any other day of Memorial Day weekend because we have so many parades and things of that nature.
I know, it's a busy time.
Where do we get like the information from like the police department that this is okay, you know, with them? Because usually we'll get some input from the police department.
So Chief Hevia is aware of it, as Deputy Chief Berry, Deputy Chief Craig, so I don't know what other information, because I've been working with them along with Roger Drenth on the parade route. Captain Bonnie would be assisting that day as far as organizing because he was so instrumental in organizing the Greenwich Police 125th Parade. So he has some experience there. So I'm working in close contact with the Greenwich Police and others in this, with the town of Greenwich.
I, I would be interested in, because it sounds super exciting and it could be oversubscribed?
I hope that's the case. My concern is undersubscribed right now, so.
But if you had contingency for oversubscribed?
I, yes, I think we're prepared and, for example, in speaking to Roger Drenth with the Greenwich Police Department, right now, he's planning on 22 Greenwich Police Officers assisting that day in addition to private security on-site that day. So I think, you know, 22 seems like a significant number and I think it's being prepared in any eventuality.
You know, and I'm also thinking, sorry, because this is the first time I'm hearing of it, so the free food, when that runs out, so I imagine like all the restaurants will be open and.
Yeah, so I mean, six to eight's a pretty short time window, but we want to do something and that's one way in which we can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman.
So I agree, this sounds great. I'm looking forward to it. This is, this is the first time though, so generally speaking, we just have, we have first.
So generally speaking, we just have, we have first reads so that we get public input, just as a process.
That's my understanding, Selectperson, that there's a two-week public comment period to follow.
Exactly. And to Lauren's point, for the menorah lighting, this board required, we waited to vote on it until we had all of the permits in hand. So I think we would want to do the same thing here. Is that right?
Yeah, this is a first read, and this is the first time you're hearing of it. So there, we'll hear some more public comment. But also, they're still working on the details of it. It's still a few weeks away. But it's exciting. And I know, as Scott said, we have some experience in this. And Captain Bonney pulled off, you know, just a great parade last year. So yeah, I know it's going to work out well. But I know there's still details to be, you know, looked at, into. So yeah.
So just so you're aware, I've also completed all the paperwork for the application for special event, because this is a separate event than the Greenwich Town Party. So all that paperwork has been completed and filed with Parks and Rec at this point. So we're excited. And I believe that our Greenwich community will be also excited. So the one question which I think is on everybody's mind at this point, at least that I hear on a daily basis, is who's performing at the Greenwich Town Party? Well, I'm not going to give you that answer today. We're working on it. You know, I know we're a little late in the game as far as announcing. But we just want to make sure all the details are just buttoned down and Ts crossed, Is dotted, before we make an announcement. So that will occur this month. Because I know that the town of Greenwich probably gets, you get many inquiries here on this because people think that the event is part of the town of Greenwich. But we're working on an announcement, and that should be forthcoming in the weeks ahead.
And I would be remiss, as co-chair of the Sustainability Committee, if I didn't make a plug if this event could be as waste-free as possible.
Absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate this. Lots to look forward to. And we look forward to speaking with you in the coming weeks.
See you on March 22nd.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay. Coming towards the end, we have just two more items. The request from, actually, no, I'm sorry. One more item, which is, where am I, what am I missing? Oh, the parking space. I'm sorry. Yeah, I saw the town party. Request from the Greenwich Town Party for use of the Horse Neck Parking Lot. It's Megan. Oh, she's on Zoom, okay.
Megan, if you could please accept the.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Megan. Good morning.
Okay, great. Hi, good morning, everybody. So I am simply requesting, and I see Scott's coming back up to the podium, so that's great, in case there's any questions for him. As we all know, Boys and Girls Club is leasing the space across the street from our building, which is One Horse Neck Lane. And Scott has requested, as he has done in years past, to use our parking spaces on the date of the Greenwich Town Party, which is Saturday, May 27th. To park the guest, May 27th, correct?
Yes. Yes, the 27th.
Yes, to park the guest artists in that space that we are currently leasing from the town of Greenwich. We are not open that day, so we will not be using those spaces. And further, we actually are doing some parking, working with Scott independently at Four Horse Neck Lane for additional parking. So I'm simply requesting permission to extend those parking spaces to him on the day of the event.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Sounds very reasonable. But I know it's a first read. We'll vote on this in two weeks. But certainly, you know, it's something that goes hand-in-hand with your event that you put on very successfully every year.
And the Board of Selectmen, as you recall, approved it for Neighbor-to-Neighbor previously. And obviously have the certificate of insurance for Ben Brannion, because I want to make sure he has what he needs. And, but I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have.
I'm good.
Good. Love the magnets behind you on your refrigerator.
Look at that. Stop looking at that. Look at that. That was not planned. They're great stickers.
Yeah, sure.
No, I swear. No one saved me, no one asked me.
Just kidding.
Thank you, Megan.
Thanks, Megan. And thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, we have the discussion of our potential sister-city agreement with Izum and Ukraine. And my friend Olga was here. There she is. And we had a nice Zoom the other day with the mayor of Izum. And so I think they may be joining us via Zoom. So it'll be our first international.
If you're joining us on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Well, he will be joining.
Mayor Marchenko.
Yes. He will be joining us.
Thank you.
So I'll have him kind of talk into the microphone when it's appropriate. So thank you, everybody, for your time. Good morning. My name is Olga Litvinenko. I was originally born in Ukraine, but my family moved to America when I was three and grew up in Greenwich. So I'm very pleased to be able to present this opportunity for this sister-city effort. On February 24, 2022, as you all know, the war erupted. The Russian army invaded into Ukraine. And then about a week later, on March 1st, the town of Greenwich rallied. We gathered together with state representatives and nearby community members to stand up with Ukraine. We raised the Ukrainian flag, and we showed our solidarity with that country. To date, we still stand with Ukraine. So in this sister-city effort, I think that it will solidify an everlasting relationship, an exchange of cultural knowledge and experiences. And we'll have this really special relationship to always, always talk about and always have. We chose Izum because it was established in 1681. It's located in the Kharkiv Oblast in eastern Ukraine and sits along the Donetsk River. So it's similar to Greenwich in the sense that it's a suburb to a main city. And prior to the physical war, its population was about 50,000 people with a very immense culture. Greenwich was established in 1640. I don't have to educate you all on this. We're a suburb as well. We have about 63,000 residents. And we really are a home to many families, businesses, and community activities, not limited to athletics, culture, arts, and music, and many more. So with these similarities and the, you know, the cultural opportunities in both city and town, I think that this would be a really great relationship. And it will also just really solidify our union with how we feel towards Ukraine and vice versa. As part of this kinship, both places will provide an exchange of symbolic items, to always have a piece of Greenwich in Izum and a piece of Izum in Greenwich. So our basic proposal consists of an exchange of the towns, the town and city flags, proclamations to hang in town halls. And we're thinking of a few other creative things that we can do. So I'll actually be going to Ukraine in the coming weeks, and we'll meet with the mayor there. And we'll actually physically be present. And we'll try to figure something out, what we can bring here that maybe is part of their, more so, part of their culture. And then we'll work together to do the same there. We're hoping, given your approval and if we can move forward with this, that we can make the announcement on April 16th. And Viktor Marchenko will join virtually. We would like to have you all there present as well. And at this moment, I would like to take the time to introduce Viktor Marchenko. Let me pull him up. Okay. So he doesn't speak English. So I'll do a little bit of translating here. And then vice versa. I don't think many of you may understand Russian or English, or Ukrainian, excuse me. So.
He had it right.
Yes. A little bit of both. Viktor, ты меня слышишь?
Да, да, да.
Да, добрый вечер. Спасибо большое, что вы с нами сейчас. Весь борт сейчас. Let me see if I can show you guys. Okay. Они все тут сидят? Everybody. Me, Mr. Viktor Marchenko. Viktor, пару минут если у вас есть, чтобы сказать что-то об этом отношении между оба города и как мы чувствуем к этому? I basically just asked if, you know, what few words he wants to say in the sister-city effort.
Город Изум, Капецкая область, приветствует город Гринович. Мы очень надеемся, что мы заключим попротивство и будем в дальнейшем вместе работать в культурной сфере и помогать руду в разных вопросах. Переведите сразу это.
Я сейчас переведу. He says it's a pleasure to meet everybody, and he's very excited for the opportunity to enter into the sister-city effort with the town of Greenwich, especially with the exchange of cultural opportunities and options that there can be for the future.
Мы очень благодарны американскому народу за помощь, которую они оказывают нашей стране и нашему городу тоже. Надеемся, что в будущем это не прекратится. Потому что нам сейчас тяжело, у нас идет война, мы сдерживаем агрессора. Город Изум был воротами на Донбасс в свое время. У нас было очень много разрушений. И мы сдержали врага, но были оккупированы полгода. И уже полгода, как мы город освободили, и сейчас потихоньку навазуем мирным.
Я сейчас переведу, Viktor. He says he's very, very grateful for all of this. And it's been a really interesting time for Izum because they were occupied for about six months. And it's now been about six months since they have finally been able to really start getting back on their feet. And for them, that this is very special, to have this relationship. They're very grateful to the American people, to the people who have been helping, and the people who have been taking notice of Ukrainian civilians and what they've been going through and all the efforts. And he just continues to really reemphasize the gratitude and how he's looking forward to this relationship. Viktor, я кончу этот тут, потому что у нас мало времени. Вы хотите что-то еще закончить?
Да. Это для нас первый опыт города Дальнего Зарубежья. У нас есть города попротивы Польше, Латвии. Но так далеко еще не было. Надеемся, что это будет долгосрочное, качественное и продуктивное сотрудничество.
Спасибо большое, спасибо. He says that this is the longest, geographically, the longest destination that they have entered into any sort of sister effort. They have a few others in the nearby European countries. And he really hopes that this can be a very long relationship, that they can, we all can flourish from this and learn a lot about each other. That he's very grateful again. Yes. Спасибо большое, Viktor.
So, okay. I want to thank Mayor Marchenko and Olga for putting this together. And this is, this will be their fifth, if it's approved, this will be their fifth sister-city relationship. This will be our fourth that I'm aware of. We have one in China. And just 10 years ago, we did, in this room, we did, we welcomed the mayor of Rose in Calabria, Italy. And it was Mayor Leone came here. And that, and we also did Mora de Santis, which is another town in Italy. So that was about 10 years old, 10 years ago. And we have the pictures of Rose and Mora de Santis paintings with little proclamations in their office. So hopefully, we hope to add Izum in the coming months.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, so much.
Thank you. And thank the mayor.
Yes, I will. Yeah, they're in the, you know, curfew timeframe right now. But he hung on, and he was really looking forward to today's meeting. So he was happy he could say a few words.
I think you made history. That's a first international, of course, we've had. So thank you. Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that's exciting. So more of that to come. And hopefully, in April, we'll be announcing that. We will be announcing it. But the relationship will obviously be virtual for a while until things settle down. And then we'll be able to have people going back and forth and exchanging cultural ideas and traditions.
I'm excited. My ancestors, some of them are from Poland, resided on the Ukraine border. And actually, my great-grandmother and grandmother spoke Ukrainian and have a lot of traditions. So I'm really excited personally. Likewise. Well, not likewise. I'm not Ukrainian, but I'm very excited about forging this relationship. Process-wise, what's the next step?
Really, it's us. We can, it's, no one else has to do this. We've checked in the past when we've done it. So we just wanted to get some, you know, people to get some information about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and establish a timeframe. And we picked April. And so around April 16th. And then just to let people know what to expect from this. And again, when things settle down over there, please, got to be sooner rather than later, then we'll take it to the next level. But for now, it would be virtual.
All right. So essentially, this is a public input time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's already been in the paper. So there has been lots of feedback already. And people are very, you know, the people I've spoken or reached out were very supportive of this. So thanks again. And we'll be talking to you in the next few weeks. Thanks, Olga.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we end, we do have a public comment period.
And two nominations.
And two nominations. And just, yeah, just going to get in just in time. So any comments, public comments? Okay. I asked, if you're saying the same thing, to just condense it, because we're up against a 12 o'clock curfew. So just come, I know who you are, but just identify yourself, please, because you've been waiting patiently for two hours.
And all very interesting. Thank you all for all that you do. Candace Garthwaite, 36 Park Avenue, Old Greenwich. And just here to say a couple of words about pickleball and also pickleball and tennis. We want to thank Fred and, as the first electman, for supporting the capital item to put four dedicated courts over at the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. So that's rolling through the budget process at this time. That's such a great location because, you know, there aren't nearby neighbors, there's parking, it's part of a whole recreational center. We are running into some bumps in the road, apparently, with the BET. It's a $375,000 allocation. And the Budget Committee, at this point, I believe, they're split in their vote for reducing that by $100,000, which really derails the project, which is disappointing in and of itself. The difficulty is that this area is under construction right now. So there's a timing issue. So if you have the whole situation where you're going to be resurfacing and redoing, this is the time to put in new courts. If we can't do it this year, then obviously, you put it off for a couple of years at the minimum. And then if you, if we were able to go forward, it's going to be destructive to actually the, the back of the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center and the work that's already been done. So we just want to make that statement that we hope that this is just a bump in the road and not a derailment. So we just want to go public with that. Secondly, I just want to say briefly on behalf of tennis players and pickleball players because we have a number of hybrid courts. That's how we're providing access. And the courts, the tennis courts across town are in sorry shape. They really, I know that the Parks Department also, I want to thank for all their support for pickleball. They are putting together a study of all the tennis courts. The tennis courts behind the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center are 50 years old. And those surfaces do pose danger, actually, to players. So the tennis courts across town are going to be part of a study. And, and we are going to need for recreation. It's a quality of life. It's really an asset. People go to towns for their schools, their recreation, quality of life. And we believe that work will need to be done on those courts.
Thank you so much, Candace. Jody.
Am I able to talk?
Yeah, very quickly, if you get.
So Fred, I wouldn't be here without your mentorship. You are the reason I'm standing here. And it's.
Hold on. Was that, what is that? Is that ours?
Keep going?
Yeah.
We're stuck here for a little while now.